How's the city handling that stuff? I mean, I have a business license to have an office in Mount Pleasant, but.
Jail time.
Ads cutting down trees or something. And I'd move away from the glare, but then you get to see how plain and boring this spare room at, you know.
Oh, we're going to use you to stand definitely stand the light now.
Let's roll.
Hold on, I think, hold on just a sec.
The old furniture and just Tupperware and.
All right, we should be live, I think.
Ready?
Yes, we're live, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with state law. We have one item on the agenda for today, consider making a recommendation to city council regarding a zoning amendment affecting sewer infrastructure and residential zoning districts. Doug, you want to kick it off?
Yes. So, this subject came up at your last meeting. It also subsequently came up last night at the council meeting. And I would say that generally the council members expressed kind of the same concerns that this group expressed. They did give it first reading last night, but I think that happened because of, with the knowledge that the planning commission was going to look into it closer and come up with recommendations between now and their November meeting. So while they did, like I said, pass it along, I think it was, it was with the expectation that some work and modifications would come. So, to just kind of talk globally about the issue, the way this would happen is we will hopefully discuss conceptually today, some tweaks that could be done and potentially mitigate the concerns of folks would have around these future lift stations. If we can kind of agree conceptually today, I would have the expectation that at your regular meeting in November, you will have actual modifications to the code to look at in November. That then would be made in the way of a recommendation to city council for their can, public hearing and consideration at their November meeting. So, that is all said, assuming that, you know, this, that we're going to find a path forward, and I guess that would be kind of a starting point in my mind as to where, as to how we proceed. I think that we, and I don't know that we've collectively gotten to the point where we agree. Let me just see, I've got people in the, got people in the waiting room. That, that generally the, the city wants to see the expansion of sewer and collectively we acknowledge that the expansion of sewer has to have this change to, to make it happen. So I guess that's kind of a starting point to get us to the next question of if we want to have sewer expanded, we understand that that's going to require these lift stations throughout the island. I think the next consideration is how would that, what modifications would we make to the code to make that a possibility? So I would suggest that kind of hurdle one of this, of this meeting be dedicated to discussing the idea of, do, are we in fact serious about expanding sewer to the entire island? If so, do we agree we need these lift stations? And if, if those are kind of a given and a yes, I think the next conversation will be how that would be treated under the city's code. So, having said that, is there any, anybody out there that is at a point that they are doubting that the long range plan of the island should include expanding sewer to everybody? I guess that would be hurdle number one.
Douglas, I don't want to interrupt, but Mark Yodas was trying to get in the meeting and he said he was waiting.
He's there.
Okay, he said, okay, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure he was there in case there were any engineering questions, thank you.
If I may say something, I mean, I don't think anybody on the commission is against sewer expansion. We've been working real hard to get that to happen. I think what kind of prejudiced our, our discussion last meeting was the fact that, you know, it was on a specific piece of property that I guess people are near and dear to. I, I've driven around the island a lot and I've been on, I use the county website, GIS for locating some of the, the pump station, lift stations and it wouldn't look like from at least the county website that it, it looks like water and sewer commission must have gotten easements through the properties on Ocean Boulevard. They weren't necessarily deeded properties, is, is one, is that correct? And then two, when looking at the lot on Seventh and Palm, is the aisle, is water and sewer commission planning to purchase that whole property or really obtaining an easement? I, I also then scaled, so you know, that's, that's never a safe thing, but it looks like some of these lift stations could potentially be within the street right of way. Obviously, as it affects that Seventh Avenue property, it doesn't ever encroach on any of the building setbacks. So it wouldn't necessarily disable that lot from, from developing a structure if somebody were so inclined. But more importantly, here we are looking like water and sewer is looking to purchase a whole lot, which certainly they can't afford to do and, and put 30 new lift stations in. So what is really the process of, of obtaining property to do this? Is it through eminent domain? There aren't that many properties unless they build them totally within easements, which is certainly possible. You know, it seemed there are water at beach access points with 60 foot wide easements along Ocean Boulevard. You could easily fit a lift station in that without interrupting private property. So I'm, I'm curious about how that weighs in, you know, I think, you know, we would have to grant or rewrite an ordinance for, or less a square footage. Some of the ones on Palm Boulevard look like they scaled to only be 20 feet by 30 feet. If I use a little maintenance and their fencing and stuff, but you know, I don't know if it's, if island wise, it's, it's as impactful as that first look that we had on Seventh Avenue in Palm.
Well, Ron, I could just respond that whether it's an easement or they own the, the property fee simple or whatever the ownership arrangement is, the zoning conundrum doesn't change in any of those scenarios, they're all in residential districts.
Oh yeah, so it's, my question is not really per se a zoning question, it's more of how really is, is water and sewer commission planning to acquire these thousand square foot pieces, you know, whether they be entire parcels or, or what? You know, that's, that's just a question, I, you know.
Right, let me, let me interject if I could. We would be buying it straight out from the beach company. The Bill Jenkins, our special projects manager, met with all of the, except for all, all of the adjoining property or adjacent property owners. And their plan once was explained or their thoughts were they'd much rather see a green space park with a future lift station there than they would a house. You know, from that standpoint, it's, it's something of an improvement to what's there now. The future properties, the city may own one that we can use, we may have to purchase, may have to lease. So each one of those designated future sites would be really on a individual basis as to acquisition of that particular property.
And Jay, this is Scott, are, are you saying that the only thing that will ever go on that lot is just that thousand square foot pump station for, in perpetuity?
Exactly, except there would be a park. The, the plan is to either get with the adjoining property owners, adjacent property owners, or together get the garden club, get who, get the city involved, but turn it into a, a, a nice little green space for the, for the citizens. But the, the, our primary, and it, it may or may not happen. I mean, we could be buying the property and the, could be five years down the road, could be three years down the road before the lift station would ever really materialize.
You guys don't think economically that spending a half million bucks plus the, the lift station for the thousand square foot footprint isn't kind of overkill? That you said you, you may not need for five to eight years?
You know, we're looking at it as an exchange of asset. You know, the money sitting in the bank in the form of cash versus real estate, we, we can't buy the, I guess would be a deed restriction from the beach company is we cannot sell it or use it for anything other than green space or, or the lift station.
So does that, do those costs get baked back into the rate base to cover your costs on that acquisition?
Shouldn't, should not, I mean, this, these are budgeted items for the lift stations as we carry forward. This just seemed like an opportunity to acquire a designated spot along with, you know, doing something nice for the community.
I'm sorry, could I interject? I'm Mark Yodas with Thomas Nuttman. And I, I appreciate this dialogue and this focus on this one particular lot. Unfortunately, you know, the, the global picture is other pump stations. This could be the site for a first one, second one, or the last one, I don't know. I mean, the zoning matter is still applies to all of them. Ideally, what I, what I understood from many people is that that lot became available and it is a site that we designated as a future pump station because, you know, it's open, there's no buddy's lot that's already developed. So it seemed like an easy picking, you know, low hanging fruit. I understood that the commission was going to buy it because pretty much nobody else was and try to work with the city at some point to make it more of a public space than just the pump. All they need is a little pump station site. So I think we're, we're focusing so much on that one lot, but really need to move past that. I think it's an opportunity for all parties to work together. But the other stations, whether they be on an open space or somebody's corner lot, the zoning matter, whether it's allowed or not, still applies. So it's, I think we got to look at the big picture and that may be one, you know, we could all be passed away by the time that one ever needed for a pump station site.
That's a good, that's a kind of a good segue because I guess I go back to one of Douglas's original questions at the meeting was about, you know, do we all, or is everybody on board with supporting the sewer expansion? And then the last word is island wide. And I think that, that there seems to be a lot of discussion, at least amongst folks I talked to about affordability, who pays for it? We've got great plans, you guys have done phenomenal designs, but at what cost? And the question, I think, Billy, you put it in your email too. Do we have a, is there a difference between sewer expansion and sewer expansion island wide? Because it's just simply cost prohibitive and do we need to, at some point, probably not on this call, address that elephant in the room? Because the cost to go island wide and who's going to pay for it now, it gets financed? I don't think that question's ever been answered. But there's great plans out to do it, we just don't have a way to, to make it happen.
And can I add a comment to that from an engineering perspective? Whether it's in five years or 10 years or 20 years or maybe longer, somebody's going to force that matter to come to a head and say, you got to do it. Whether it be EPA, DHEC, or that, you know, sea level rising and high tides keep going up. So the existing septic systems won't function and it becomes, you know, an environmental and a health matter and it has to be done. So looking long term, that's, I think the setup is that this is just one little piece of, of a bigger puzzle. You mentioned financing. Until you have pretty much almost mandatory connections to whatever's put in there, it's really going to be hard to fund it unless you're just, you know, saving a little bit out of time and, and doing it. And then, you know, that'd be probably a hundred years before it could get done. So I mean, there's several hurdles and I'm just thinking you look long term of, of what this one little matter means.
Could I, if I could just follow on Mark with what you're saying, I, I think that's what brought us to this meeting today is that we are thinking long term because what we allow to happen to this one little station, as you say, is going to happen to the other 15 or 16 that will be put out there. So we want to be sure, whatever we agree to, that this is, is going to work with the residents and it's going to work with the city and it's going to work with the commission. So that is kind of where we are.
And I, and I totally agree with that.
Yeah.
To me, you know, Douglas has got a zoning question to address and that's, I think, the primary, what's the discussion it started with. And at some point, if you, if you do a pump station on the outside or a different one, that plan goes to several people, including the city of Isle of Palms to review. And that's when the real detail is reviewed and considered and evaluated. You know, it's kind of like the stakeholders. We, we gave a sketch, kind of a rendering, and that's a first pass of what we see might happening. You know, with screening, some landscape buffers, a taller fence than normal, eight foot fence. So, you know, I mean, that's a first pass that would, I think all of those stations would have something like that. They might not all look exactly the same, but I mean, the goal of a pump station is to, A, it works. It doesn't cause no noise and odor and it's, it's invisible. I mean, that's a, that's a goal.
Douglas, i- i- if we change the ordinance, then who has the final say on allowing them to put a lift station in a particular spot? Is that just left at the staff level?
Yes, yeah, that, so the way, and, and we could get to this discussion if we can get past this first question, but there are only, you know, in South Carolina planning, the way planning is laid out, there are only a handful of tools that cities have on these type of matters. One is basically, you all would create the template that I administer. And that's kind of the path that we're going now, where theoretically you all would create all of the, you know, the standards that they would need to apply to, just like we have for a house. And if one of you or if somebody buys a lot, they come in and they negotiate all of the hurdles that are in place in the code. And if they can comply with those, they get a permit. And there's no public, you know, there's no public review of that, there's no, there's no hearing on that, it's just a staff level review of whether or not they meet the criteria in the code. The, the only, there, there is also a tool in the code called a special exception, which is, which is a review by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And it, and it basically gives that latitude to them. And they would have generic kind of questions or, or standards that they would apply. So that is, that's a different review process, but quite frankly, whoever is doing that review and approval, they will need to be imposing and reviewing it against standards that are in the code. And that would be the planning commission's kind of, and the city council's job here would be to come up with the standards to incorporate those into the code for them to be reviewed again. But there's not, you know, just say hypothetically, you wanted everyone to be reviewed by city council or you wanted everyone to be reviewed by the planning commission. The state, the architecture, the state law regulating planning doesn't allow that. You have to do it in accordance with the standards in the planning legislation.
So is that the proposal that you sent over, Douglas, that red line, C in subsection two?
That's correct.
That would be the proposal for the amendment and then the rest of it is, is what is existing currently?
Yes, the red line is what's changed. And I think, you know, again, if we, if we can get kind of past the first question, I think that what we would be talking about now is adding bullets under C that they would need to comply with when it comes time to reviewing their permit request.
Well, and that was my question and it goes, it, it's kind of coupled to what you mentioned a few, a few comments ago, but I didn't understand why we're trying to put this language into that subsection instead of section nine where it's already covered with, with respect to the zoning administrator and the Board of Zoning Appeals. Seems like the wastewater specifically is, is covered there.
Well, so the, the reason for doing it that way, Marty, is to only carve out lift stations. To not carve out things larger than lift stations, basically sewer treatment facilities. So I was trying to crack the, the language in the code as little as possible without putting it, but I, I think if that was the, it could also go there and we thought about putting it there and it could be done, but we wouldn't want, we'd want to be sure that we explained that this exception is only dealing with very small lift stations without opening it up to other things, you know, other larger pieces of infrastructure.
Okay, but not necessarily trying to avoid it as an exception in the, in the process of review through the Board of Appeals, not necessarily.
So, yes, we could get the, if that is the, if that's the preference for these things to be reviewed by the Board of Zoning Appeals, that could certainly be done and, and, and it may be just put into that section. So that is a, that's a route that we could go.
Thanks for that clarification.
Yeah, that would be the special exception route. But again, to, to create special exceptions, you would still need to create those criteria that the Board of Zoning Appeals would be reviewing it against.
And may I add, and I work at a lot of municipalities, utility tracts, which is covered under sewer pump stations are normally a permitted use. Although it has criteria that you have to follow. When you get into larger tracts, like the wastewater treatment plant, you know, it's a big footprint. That goes into usually different categories, necessarily permitted use unless it was identified, you know, in some comprehensive plan. So I think the approach is right and it may be that there'd be some other criteria under this two C that would be added.
See, I guess my, my initial response is to disagree with that. I think it's probably more appropriately fit into that section nine, but it sounds like that's maybe a discussion that we can have later, so I'm not trying to.
No, Marty, that's a, that's actually a pretty good point because I think what Chris and what Jay have already said was that there are, these are going to be very infrequent instances and they are going to be extremely high impacting to the residents that are next to or around these. I think handling it on an exception basis, I'm not sure that that would be such an unreasonable request if there are going to be 15. As Mark said, it could be over 10 years, 20 years, 30 years. So instead of maybe having it just wide open for planting wherever you want, you know, wherever it could be in a residential area, why not handle it as an exception? This one being an exception, it seems like it's gone the right way and everybody's aware of it and it's accomplishing what probably would be intended through the exception process.
We have to keep in mind, we have to keep in mind that we're an established community with very, very little free space. We're not a new development where we, we can put in, we can place things where we want them, we really can't do that, we got to place them where we can. So the, we got to have very, very tight control over the design and what goes through with this process. So I'm, I'm with you, Marty.
Sorry, I came in late, so I missed a little too. I didn't mean to try to hijack the, the meeting, I just had a question or two.
So I, I would, I think it sounds like we have kind of gone past the question of do we all kind of, or do you all agree that this is, you know, it, we, I was intending for this first part to talk about, you know, if the, if the, if there was not consensus on expanding the sewer or if, you know, there was some doubt as to whether or not gravity sewer with lift stations is the route to go and there was a preference to grinder pumps with a bunch of little lifts, then I think we could have that discussion now, but it sounds like you will have kind of moved past that and, and there's generally consensus that you're looking for a route to allow the necessary lift stations.
I would agree.
If that's the case, let, let's kind of move on, let's take that as an assumption that we're going to work towards creating a template basically to get these things through. And that would be the first question for the group to consider. Do you do it in such a way that it's approved at a staff level? Or do you do it in such a way that it's approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals? And I would just forewarn this group that either way, you have to create criteria. Either way, those criteria have to be reviewed fairly, impartially. And, you know, and it's, and it's much like how you all deal with subdivision requests. You know, there, there should not be a sense that if a squeaky wheel is near it, but the request complies with all of the standards, that the Board of Zoning Appeals would be able to say, hey, this is, this just doesn't, the neighbors don't want it, therefore we're not going to approve it. So it would be very much the same process that you all are involved with with subdivisions. They come before you, they have a plan, it meets every letter of the law. You all, you know, you are an additional layer of review over what I do. But at the end of the day, you know, there is this kind of, and not that it's, and not that it creates, you know, any bad feelings or ill will, but I feel like sometimes boards and commissions that are in that position almost wish they weren't because you all are going to be, or the Board of Zoning Appeals is going to be in the same position that I'm in when I consider these things. Yet it's going to have been kind of broadly publicized. So that's just a matter of preference. If you, and, and I, again, I would just urge you to consider the fact that the board will not be able to make what the courts would call arbitrary decisions if it meets the standards in the code. So having said that, am I to understand that collectively the group prefers that the Board of Zoning Appeals makes that final judgment?
Yeah, I mean, my thoughts on that, it is a difficult decision, is going to be a difficult decision and, and transparency is, is probably the way to go. Now, you certainly do have a good point where we're going to need to carefully consider what we put into this, but and, and how it's evaluated, but yeah, that's, that's where I stand, that's my two cents.
Could I interject on, having done it several different ways through different municipalities? You know, a BOZA approval is normally pretty hard to get. But a site plan review, which sort of is, it's maybe different people, but it's, you have different criteria and it is a little bit more flexible as far as what you like or don't like. Is that maybe a more palatable way? Because if you do BOZA for 15 or 16 stations in the future, that's, that's a pretty big hurdle, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I, I might, my thoughts on that, Mark, yeah, my thoughts on that, Mark, is I'm, I'm with Marty a hundred percent. The more transparency and the harder it is to make sure that everything's reviewed appropriately in, in the light of day and on all of these with the impacts to a potential homeowner, I, I think BOZA is perfectly capable of getting this done. And if they're like, 15 and 15 over 20 or 30 years, I think that's a load that they can handle.
Yeah, I was thinking more in the sense of it's easier with a site plan review that goes to planning commission than it is a BOZA review that you're either breaking the code or not, you know, type thing. Getting an exception is always harder than meeting criteria of a board, I, I think.
So Mark, to answer that question, the, at the, at the city here of Isle of Palms, we have, the Board of Zoning Appeals hears variances, which they almost never grant. And in fact, they've, in 20 years, they may have granted two or three. As a variance, that is now a very different tract than a special exception. On the Isle of Palms, like a home office we were talking about is a special exception and they review and approve. And they review and approve two or three of them a month. And it's a, and it, you know, that, that's an example of one that I would say is, is almost a rubber stamp. So I think as long as, in my opinion, as long as the standards are clear, you know, it, it has the additional kind of hurdle of another public meeting. But like I said, they approve two, three, sometimes four special exceptions every month. And it's a very different, it's a very different thing than a variance. Variances, and, and Jay used to be on that board, so he can speak with some authority that they almost never would grant a variance, but it's a different animal.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying, if it's allowed by zoning, like it's heavily written, and it goes to a, like site plan review through planning commission, then you're still going to see what's there and what has input and, and be able to massage that. If you say it's not, it has to be a special exception or a, a, you know, BOA variance. That's, that's uncomfortable to be able to make sure that you can do it. But if I'm, I'm planning, and I'm just looking from an engineer, if I'm planning something and I said, well, this is the best place to put it, and all these people, we're not sure we can get a, you know, a BOZA approval. So, and I'm just saying, it makes it much more difficult. It's, it's a bigger hurdle, I think, than a site plan review where you can go with, you know, people like you guys and say, this is what we have, you know, what, give us some feedback. I don't think you get that in a BOZA review. Maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but that's my experience.
I think that's why we got to get the standards right and the, you know, the minimum standards and put some thought into this.
Can I address just briefly the, the BOZA? As Doug alluded, I did sit on that board for a while. And at a variance, if, if we requested a variance and it went that way.
Jay, it's not a variance, just for clarity. It's, it is, this is the same, if you recall, the home offices, how many you approved in your time there? This is that same mechanism. It's special exception, not variance. The much easier.
Right, but, but I'm saying, what I'm saying is the variance, if we were, have to go for a variance, we'd be coming right back to the planning commission to do what we're doing right now. So at a special exception, having it as a special exception makes far better sense than, than the other, other route.
All right, I think everybody's saying the same thing, maybe with Mark as the exception. So we're going to, so we'll, I, I think there's kind of consensus that will go allowed by a special exception. And so that brings the next hurdles to be, to create standards that they would review this request against. I would, I have a handful of ideas as to where, where we might start with those. And if you all are okay, we'll just kind of go through them and we can talk about each. I, I, I might just go through all of them once and then come back and we can talk about them piece by piece and then see if there's anything additionally or we want to take away. Is that, is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
So collectively, I think the criteria would be either an eight foot fence or enclosed in a building. And that would be basically their choice. So that would be the first criteria. Second criteria, some odor control device. And I have spent not much time, but would hope that between now and a final draft, I would want to identify some standard. And I, and I think it's probably particles per million or there's some standard, I would think for odor that I would want to identify that they design a system that would meet that standard. And Mark, you may or may not know, so, but we'll get to that. So that would be the second trigger, that there be adequate, basically adequate odor control added. Third thing would be a vegetative buffer around the, around the outside of the fence to hide, to basically hide it. Fourth thing would be that any glare or lights associated with it be not on permanently and not basically shining into folks' houses all the time, so that maybe they're on a switch where they're, they're turned out, they're turned on when they're being worked on, but otherwise they're, they're off, they're dark. I think, and, and, and the folks at the Water and Sewer Commission can help with this. But I do know that there's also noise associated with potentially adding generator power and those generators kind of cycling through and exercising routinely. So that we may want to talk about how to minimize the impact of the generators being on site and running. I think that they have, they generally considered remote generators that they only pull on when they need them, so not having a permanent generator that's constantly cycling. That's, so those are, whatever that is, I think that's four criteria. And I don't know if we want to, I see Mark's hand's already up. I don't know if we want to.
I just, my point five, you had five.
Five, I thought you were, okay. Any thoughts on those or are they too much, too little? Do we want to add to it? Any objection to them?
I think those are good, Douglas. I mean, and you could probably roll it up under odor control, but I had detection on there as, as a portion of that, so. I don't know that that's a, yeah, detection, yeah. And it, it goes along with what you're saying about having some measurable standard to control odor. I think that's going to be the big one that, that you're going to hear as a, a concern for residents anyway, is the odor. So, but yeah, I think those are good. You had enclosure, eight foot fence, odor control, vegetative buffer, light pollution, noise abatement. I think those are all good.
Maximum elevation.
What was that last one?
Add, add a maximum elevation.
There, is there a, I know, Mark, that with the flood zones high, there's a need to get those panels above flood. Is there kind of a, the ability to choose a number that everything has to remain below? 12 feet? I mean, is it 12 feet, 10 feet, eight feet? Unless there's a building that you choose to do, and then maybe would there be a different standard?
Yeah, I mean, basically that's your building code though. It's, you know, flood, base flood elevation plus one foot. So all the equipment has to be above that. And usually, you know, the panels are going to be three to four inches tall, I mean, three to four feet tall. So, you know, some of those could get a little high. I mean, there's, in today's flood zones, some are pretty high.
So they are, they are lowering, as everybody will, will recall in January. So they won't be, whether we like it or not, they won't be high after January. So I think that's a good one, a maximum height. I think we can, between now and your next meeting, we can come up with some number there.
What about setbacks?
Well, the, I had assumed that we would, we would not, you know, the ones that are there have zero setback. And then the buffer, if we had a 10 foot buffer all the way around it, that kind of by default creates a 10 foot setback around it. But I think that generally, we want them to have the ability to have them up against the road and not pushed back into the line of houses would be. So I have not, I had not contemplated that there'd be a setback off the road for that reason.
No, but if you have, you may not have a setback off the road, but you're certainly going to want it from the other properties.
Well, so that would be that buffer. So that would be 10 feet all the way around it. But we, that's up for comment.
Which is a good true zoning buffer. I mean, usually either a fence or distance are, or what generally constitutes landscape buffers or buffer, buffer yards. Here we're doing both. We're adding a fence and planting. Is, you know, it seems electrical transformers are always in electrical easement or the right of way. Is there any way we could suggest or ask that as much as practicable, that these lift stations are within either right of way or an easement? I mean, they're, they're obviously larger than most easements would allow or, or right or right of way, but.
I think I'm understanding from Water and Sewer Commission that they cannot be in rights of way, which is eating, I think that's creating this pinch to some degree. Is that correct, Chris or Mark?
They, they cannot, DOT, South Carolina DOT won't allow a pump station in their right of way. The city of Isle of Palms, if they have roads, may allow a pump station in their right of way. And I would, I would like, make sure we, it, I guess it's clear, the, the buffer. I mean, we talked about a thousand square foot footprint. And we have templates like a 20 by 20 and 30 by 30. But if you put a 10 foot buffer around, you know, I mean, there, you can't, you can't get anything in there. So I mean, because it takes a lot on that perimeter. So exclusive, the thousands, but exclusive of, of the buffer. And I'm sure we can, you know, work on a, a planting plan so that even the fence goes away, you know, after some maturity of plants.
Yes, I think that's a, that's a point that we would need to clarify, that right now the thousand square feet is in there. But I think to Mark's point, if we had 10 feet all the way around it, that would leave less than they need. So it would need to be a thousand square feet plus the required buffer.
Yeah, that's where my mind went with it when you said that anyway, was in addition to what is carved out. It's needed for the pump station.
Also thinking of net, something like a U, that's not as broad a plant material, but is full and gets tall, would be an ideal screen plant as opposed to pituitus form or something that, or, or wax myrtle that just grows wild and fat. That's up to the commission.
I, I have a little divert, diversion question here. I'll change the topic a little bit. Excuse me. But if you look at DEHAC Standards for Wastewater Facility Construction Regulation 61-67, there's a whole bunch on pump stations. Where is that, the, and the standards required for the pump station, where is that covered? Is that part of the, is that part of their inspection or?
Yeah, so anything that they do, even a grinder pump, they go through DEHAC and the state agencies to get anything that they do in that system authorized by that group. So that's a separate additional layer of regulation that they have to deal with.
So we could put in our regulation, just that we will conform for certain, certainly we will conform to the 61-67.
Yeah, there's no choice on that.
Yeah, but it doesn't hurt to say it.
Yeah, we could, we could certainly add language and, you know, we, that, uh, and they probably would get proof of compliance, but that could probably, that could be a condition of the special exception that a DEHAC permit can be acquired or is acquired.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be down the process chain though, from getting the Board of Zoning Appeals approval. That would be, Board of Zoning Appeals would be very much conceptual, you know, get it through that, get over that hurdle. If they're successful in that hurdle, they then would go to full design. And then DEHAC obviously looks at, you know, every nut and bolt for their requirements. And, and they would have to get that in order to go to construction. So that would be a hurdle that would be after the Board of Zoning Appeals review.
I thought we were not going to use BOZA.
I think that you all collectively agreed that you were, but.
Right, just for an exception.
Okay.
So there's, there's two non-compliance points to the, looking specifically at this property of, of concern. If you were to go by the existing section, subsection nine is a, is that the facility is located on a lot that's at least a half an acre, which this one's under a quarter of an acre. And, and then the setback compliance is 20 feet required from all property lines. So, yeah, again, I don't, there's a lot about the genesis of what's in there that I don't understand. But just as a point of information, if you were going by the current code, those two items will be non-compliant.
So Marty, well, or I guess for the whole group, I was, my intention was to carve out a lift station, whatever, subsection with these criteria. Are you suggesting that instead of doing that, that we just change subsection little I, little I to take away number one, the half acre requirement? And number three, the setback and add the? I wasn't, that was not my intention, but if that's what the will of the group, then.
No, I don't know that I'm saying that necessarily. I just think that the way it's written now, it's, it says that the subsection applies to wastewater treatment facilities, so.
Yeah, so I think we.
We want to make that distinction.
That's not a wastewater treatment facility. The lift station is doing no treatment.
Right, I understood.
You're moving it, transporting it.
Understood. I mean, I just think that if, if we're going to go this route, I think it's important to make that distinction. If we're putting this in a separate section or if we're combining it, either way, I just think that, that, you know, there's some clarity, there's some clarifications we can make.
What about, what about a triple I?
Yes.
That's how I was envisioning doing it, a triple I that would be tiny lift stations or this set of criteria.
A lift station is less than so many square feet or whatever.
And then these, whatever it is, the thousand square feet plus these, maybe we're up to six now.
Yep.
Is how I was envisioning it. And Mark, to your point, it, it does, it doesn't just say sewer treatment and, and II, it says any public utility facility is subject to those, which is what, that is the section that created this conundrum to start with.
Because it doesn't. It also, in part A, talks about wastewater treatment facilities and public works facility, maintenance, storage.
Public utility facilities. That's the, that's the pinch. So we're going to, and that's what put us into this sequence is that section. So we're going to, we're going to carve out with triple I, small lift stations, and then those, whatever it ends up being, six, seven, I think.
I think it's so impactful that it should be in and of itself, you know, triple I should be for lift stations.
Yeah, okay, good.
Period. And then.
Marty, so the, the idea would be to take this input, put it into an actual document that you all could review and have another pass at, at your full meeting in November. And then go from there. Is that, so you will have another pass at it. I will put this into a format that we've discussed. Any other things that we want to consider adding or, that to me sounds like a pretty reasonable set of standards that we're considering?
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd appreciate the, the review on your draft. And also while we got Chris here, Chris is all this sounding okay? Yeah, no, I'd appreciate the, the review on your draft. And also while we got Chris here, Chris, is all this sounding okay to you? I mean, we're certainly interested in your, your take on it.
Yeah, that's what I was, you know, I mean, nothing sounds unreasonable. And I think, I think Mark, I don't want to speak for you, but is it something that you can live with, what we've discussed here?
Yeah, I mean, you, you can, from an engineering perspective, you can make all those happen. You know, going for each one of those, having a public meeting of a special exception. It does open it out to, you know, designed by committee and a lot of, I don't like it. And, you know, squeaky wheel gets the degree. So, you know, if it was more of a, you know, group like this and staff, you know, it would be a little easier to deal with them from purring. It wouldn't be such a big hurdle because now you, you you're not confident that, yeah, we can do it. We just need to meet certain criteria. And I, I like the criteria because it's, you know, black and white. Eight foot fence, good. Make sure it's oblique, blah, blah, blah. But it's when it's gets a little too, too touchy, you know, because it's emotional. It does, and that's what I think can happen in the, the special exception process. So.
And let's revisit that.
Do we have a vehicle for site plan review in our ordinance as, as a method?
Oh, that's the problem.
Now, and you know, again, if you know, put it back, put your frame of reference as the subdivision review of process. That's again, very much what it's going to be. If it's I have always felt a bit as though that process gives some kind of false sense of hope to the neighbors that if they are loud enough and shout enough that it will get denied. And it, to me, it almost puts the planning commission in a uncomfortable situation. I mean, think back on the Forest Trails subdivision. You have a packed house. And then you have the staff and the staff's attorneys telling you, you know, hey, this meets the criteria in the code. You don't have any basis to deny it. And, and it does, it does create a little bit of community friction. And, you know, and I guess there's, there's pros and cons to that. It may, I don't know. I don't know if those, if you went to those people, for instance, in Forest Trail and you said, was that better or worse than the alternative of it just being reviewed in-house? And if it met the standards being approved? I don't know if it kind of let them get, you know, get it off of their chest and they felt better about it, or if it just made them agitated that we kind of pulled them out to four meetings, all to say, well, it meets the criteria, therefore it's got to be approved. I don't know. There's two ways to look at it. I, I've always felt a little bit like it was creating more wrinkles than it was helping. But that's, that's up to debate, I'm sure.
Personally, I think we should let, I think the people should have a chance to voice their opinions, especially if it's impacting their neighborhood. I don't, I don't say anything wrong. I think it landed in the place it was supposed to land for that particular subdivision, Douglas. I think you did a good job on that, but the denying the opportunity for the review and the voices to be heard is contentious as it might get. I don't, I don't, I wouldn't subscribe to that.
Scott, were you there? Were you on the commission when that happened?
Just at the tail end, I think Marty and I came on as the final decisions were being made, but I, I heard it pretty loud and clear in the community on the other side of the island. So it was, it was a pretty contentious situation, as I recall.
So maybe, so I, I will say that it definitely, the animosity tailed off at the end. I mean, once it was through three readings, by the end, the message was loud and clear that there was kind of no denying it because it complied. Do those that were in those initial meetings have a reaction to whether or not that was good or bad for those red adjacent neighbors?
Well, I think it gives them a false sense of hope sometimes, like you said, that maybe something is going to change. And, and we can't deny it on the planning commission if it meets the criteria.
It does let them vent, even though it's not going to change the outcome.
And it might be painful communication, but the communication gets out there. And just because it's painful and hard doesn't mean it, we shouldn't run through the process. And like, I think you all ended up with the right decision based on what the ordinance is and said. So, you know. I think if you just keep, I think if even this process is bringing to light what was going on with that, the lot, which I think is good. I think everybody's well aware of what's happening now. And it, it does allow for some transparency, whatever that means. I mean, I think of Mount Pleasant, the whole Boulevard plan was, was discussed in public for years before it was initially implemented, but the first complaint didn't happen until the start of construction because no one was paying attention. This almost kind of forces the attention to be paid, not that it's going to impact anything, but it, it does let the public know what the story is and, and not having to hear it, you know, after the fact or secondhand. You know, I, I would prefer a planning commission review a site plan as opposed to a board of zoning appeals, even though it's not a zoning variance. Just because they're, they're a different type of board than we are. They are quasi judicial, it's, it's almost like court. And so the stakes feel a little higher with us, you know, we're, we're we're nice folks. I just like to sit around and talk for endless hours.
Feels like anyway, right?
I gotta agree with you. And your perspective is to make it nice. Planning, you're planning, you're not saying it doesn't meet this criteria or not.
That we don't have a view.
The feedback that you get from people like you makes it so much easier to make a good finished product.
Yeah, we just don't have a way of getting it to us in our ordinance, but.
All right. I think, uh, it sounds like there's maybe a little bit of division on the special exception versus not, but let's, I will draft it for the next meeting as I think, I think the, a little bit of the majority was on the side of special exception. So we'll do triple I, special exception, carve out lift stations, less than a thousand square feet, and then have those six or so criteria, and it'll come back for your review in November.
One of the thing, one of the thing I'd like to have checked. I guess right now we don't yet have an estimate on the, the load for each lift station. But I'd be really curious to know what the, what the range is going to be. Like, we're going to have one lift station at 100 gallons a minute, another one at 500 gallons a minute. What, what's going to be the range? Just to get some understanding about, are we making too broad a specification because we think it's going to be a wide range of pumps? When in reality, it may only be two or three different sizes.
So the, the master plan update that you guys participated in has that information. It's not in a real easy chart. I mean, you, it's in tables and graphs, but that information is there. So there is no stations that are really bigger than what's already out there. And of course, if you start at the breach inlet end and work, you know, your way toward the other end of the island toward Forest Trails. You know, you start out small and they get a little bit bigger because they're sort of repumping. But none of them are bigger than, you know, what's out there on, on I want to say it's not seven, what is it? Ninth Avenue and Ocean? That's kind of the the station. And that, that's small. I think it's 20 by 20.
Yeah, that's what the other stream, Mark. Station is going to have to be enlarged. Are some of your existing lift stations going to have to be enlarged that already exist?
No, then they, they might have to be enlarged from a pumping capacity, but not the footprint in the, in the wet well. There's one or two that had to be pump a little bit more, but you know, the, the physical size doesn't get bigger. It's new pumps.
So Mark had at our last meeting kind of talked about that there were large templates and small templates. And it sounded like the vast majority, including the one at Seventh, were going to be small. And then you may only have one or two of the 16 that would be that larger kind of 30 by 30 size. Is that, is that correct, Mark?
Like, maybe two, but probably just one.
So one or two more would be same size as the one on Waterway.
Correct. No, the Waterway, the one on Waterway is a little bit bigger. I'm talking about the one on Ocean Boulevard by Ninth Avenue with the wood fence.
That's small footprint, right?
That's, yeah. That's mostly what they'll be, that, that kind of small footprint.
So kind of 14 of the future 16 would be that small and maybe two of the future 16 would be a bigger footprint.
Correct. And even the one on Waterway and 29th is bigger than the Bigfoot book that we were proposing. It was just because it was the way it was carved out.
Greg, agree? Yeah. And if, if you all want to have a better understanding between now and your next meeting, and you wanted to go look at some of these pump stations. I mean, we'll take you just to the ones that we're, that Mark's talking about and some of the smaller ones, just to see if you could have an idea of the size. It's kind of, it's one to look at it on a piece of paper. It's another thing to be standing next to it.
Chris, do you guys have a funding plan for the expansion that's, you got like in your back pocket or something? I mean, seems like you're going forward with this and in the back of all of our minds, we don't feel comfortable it's affordable. How much property are you going to acquire before we, we reach that decision?
Well, part of the master plan was to acquire property if it became available. And this, this lot became, it was available and it, it fell inside that circle in the master plan to expand sewer, and that's what started the whole process.
I would also, it's just the opportunity at this point for that property.
Correct, because we, we figured it was, it was available. It was going to be hard to build a structure on the house. And it fell inside that circle that Mark Yodas had identified as being a potential pump station site. And we thought that we could partner with the city to do a park, a green space. And, and that's kind of what, how everything got rolling.
Are you looking for the city to participate in the, in the purchase of this, in the price?
No, we would, we will purchase it and we will own it, but we would want to do something with the garden club or with the city to establish a park. But we would, we would purchase property.
So Bill, to kind of build off your question, you'll remember that the planning commission forwarded that MOU, which had very kind of broad language about working together, which incidentally was finally approved last night. So quick and easy, couple of weeks, and we got that knocked out.
Yeah.
But
Got gray hair now from that.
The the commission did kind of obligate ourselves to an additional lead on MOU from that document. Really trying to drill down on how to expand the system, you know, the nuts and bolts of how's it going to get paid for? How is it really get into what, you know, mechanisms the city could put into place to facilitate that expansion? Who's going to pay for what? What grants are available? So and, and I think we agreed to delay that until the strategic planning was completed by city council to see where they got on that project. But that is also on the planning commission's horizon to try to work through a little bit in, in a little bit more detail than the newly passed MOU has about how we really would expand that sewer system. Does it let, you know, there's a lot of big questions out there. How do you pay for it? That's the big one. What kind of money is out there and how do you pay for it? Unless there's anything else, I think I have pretty clear marching orders of what to get back to you for your next meeting to consider. So I, I feel good if you all do.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Any, any other business? No other business, then I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
It's over.